Welcome, everybody. Good evening. Uh, the motion to the agenda is presented. Second?
Second.
I would say, opposed, and has proved, uh, actionized out of closed session. Is the closed session missed? We got closed session minutes in the last six months. I need most of the board's semi-annual review of unreleased closed meeting minutes to keep sealed the closed session minutes for the last six months specifically. June 21st, 2018, July 26th, 2018, August 23rd, 2018, November 18th, 2018, December 27th, 2018, October 25th, 2018, November 21st, 2018, November 29th, 2018, December 20th, 2018. And as the need to maintain confidentiality continues to exist. And then a motion to extend non-exposure of the readings of closed session portions of the board's closed meetings set forth below for the reasons that need to maintain confidentiality continues to exist, therefore keeping the audio recordings sealed for closed session meeting recordings older than 18 months specifically, where the recordings of January 30th, 2017, February 27th, 2017, March 6th, 2017, March 15th, 2017, March 28th, 2017, on the 4th, 2017, May 22nd, 2017, May 24th, 2017, June 20th, 2017. Have a motion?
So moved.
On the second?
Second.
Thank you. Ashley.
Hura?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Orly?
Yes.
Gravich?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, moving on to communications, we've got a director of transportation and report. Jim, welcome.
Good evening. I know transportation's a hot topic, so they kept coming out, listening to the transportation report. Or not. Um, so, um, first, really before I get started, um, like we all know that we've, uh, we've had our struggles in transportation this year and, um, we have a, we have a great team. And, um, I really want to publicly thank all of the staff that I work with every day because, uh, we've got a lot of folks who have gone above and beyond and worked extra hours and driven extra routes and done all that they can to make sure that we can accomplish our goal of getting kids to and from school. Not without bumps, uh, it's not going to be, but, um, I, I do want to publicly thank that we've got people from the office that are driving buses every day and, and coming in early and staying late. So I wanted to start off by saying that. Um, just, I'm going to hit some highlights. I'm not going to hit every slide. Um, you guys have heard most of these, um, this presentation before, so I'm just going to try to highlight, um, some things. Here's our current, our current fleet. Um, we have 47 that we own and we still have the eight, uh, lease buses. Uh, this is year two, so we'll have them this year. We'll have them one more year, um, before we make a decision what to do with those. Uh, we do have a couple of the eight passenger vans left. Uh, we do have the five, 10 passenger vans and then the fleet cars and the activity bus. So that's, that's really the fleet that we use to, um, move our students and some of our staff around. Um, just, just quickly, um, we have 39 buses that run, um, every day. It makes up 156 different, different routes. So two, three, four different routes, different buses that, that they're running. So a lot of the drivers are, are making a lot of individual runs every day. Um, we do have, uh, some backup buses. They have buses that break down, won't start, different things. Um, three of those are handicap buses that we use. We use them on field trips and different things. Um, let's see here, uh, go on, go ahead. Um, this is just a quick summary of what we've done over the last several years as far as, um, bus acquisitions, um, year to year. Uh, we had fleet cars, uh, or the vans, I'm sorry. We have, as I said, we've got the, um, one of the 2008, we've got one of the 2012 left and then the, the new ones this year. Um, the board last year approved, um, the selling of the old, um, eight passenger vans that we had. Uh, we put those out for sealed bids. We got bids on three of them. Those, those three that we did sell, sell, um, we were able to sell those for what we hoped to get for all five of them. So it was just a little over $40,000. Um, had to go back into the transportation fund, but that's where we bought it from. Um, we were able to purchase the five new. Um, so we're still going to work on trying to sell those last two, um, in the spring. We're going to try to go ahead and ask for sealed bids again and, and see if we can't move those other two. So we're not, we're not done with that. It's just, this is not a very good time to try to sell them. Uh, here's our, our fleet cars. Uh, these are the, the white Impala that we, uh, the staff use to go to different functions and everything. occasionally we use them for, uh, an activity. If, if there's one or two students that need to go, they'll, we can use these vehicles. Um, fuel costs, I, I left this slide in here this year. I took some of the other, other, the other graphs out, but, uh, you can see the last four years, um, as we see later on, we're going to go out for another fuel bid. Um, two-year contracts, um, this will be the third time we've done that. So the last four years were, um, times when we did fuel, um, contractually for the whole year, or in both these cases, it was a two-year contract. Um, it's, fuel costs have come down, but it's, it made a decided difference in, in our overall cost for fuel. So, um, actually, I think it was one of the board members that asked us if we would consider that and, and we did start doing it. So it has made, um, a significant difference in how we're doing that, so, um, in that cost. So you'll see later on, we're going to be looking to go out for bids again.
It's my recollection that, like now when fuel prices are really low, it feels like we've tried to go for a three or four-year bid, but they kind of did block you. Was that true?
Yes. Um, most, most of the fuel suppliers, um, weren't interested in doing long-term. Um, the, if I recall, the one that was interested, um, was going to have to price year one significantly higher than current markets, um, in order to hedge what might happen down the road. So it might benefit us year three and year four, but it was really going to hurt us year one and probably year two. So it was, uh, it was a challenge to try to find that happy medium. And it seems like a two-year is something that they're able to, they're able to go out and buy. It's, it's treated like a commodity and so they're able to go out and buy that, that gallon. We commit to a, a specific amount of gallons that we're going to use. Uh, and we've been, we've been right on that mark all four years. So, um, with the half, they're able to go out and buy that at today's prices and so that's, that's how they give us the, the long-term price. Um, maintenance costs is...
And we did, it was to our benefit to have the contract, do you know? I mean...
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, it, we, we had a lot of spikes as the market fluctuated. We had to buy fuel, we had to buy fuel and the fact that we buy fuel every month, we know it's going to fluctuate from, from month to month. So having a, an annual contract really smooths that out and helps, um, from a budget perspective. We, we know what we're going to spend. Because we know, we know how many gallons we use year to year. So it, it was a big benefit test to do that. Uh, maintenance costs, um, they're, they're down this past year, but some of that is the fact that we're, um, we have the lease buses that have, we got rid of some, some older buses when we, when we got the lease buses and that's driven some of that maintenance cost down. Um, salary expense on transportation, um, pretty, pretty steady year to year. Um, going to see that creep up a little bit. Um, we have fewer drivers, but a lot of them are driving overtime to meet, to meet the needs. So Charlotte and I have talked about that quite a bit and trying to, trying to figure out a way to manage that, but we, we just need the bodies and, and so it ends up that some of them are driving overtime, so. Um, the, the transportation expense, this is actually the benefit line. Um, it's, it's pretty consistent. We have the anomaly last year, and this is coming off the claim where we were talking about IMRF, including that in the, in the claims. So, um, maintenance costs, again, that's, um, uh, being driven down by the, by the fact that we've got some of the lease buses.
Yeah, and it's pretty substantial.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really substantial.
Well, when we, when we talk about maintenance costs, we, you always see about 10% of your buses are about 75% of your costs. It's, it's those five or six buses that are constantly dinging you here and there and here and there. And so we got rid of eight of them when we leased the other ones. So it really drove that cost down. Um, and we're seeing this year, we're, all of those other ones are, are dinging us this year now. It's not the lease buses, but we've got some others that are giving us, giving us some headaches and we're trying to manage those. But you, you'll see that go up next year, most likely. Um, here's the actual fuel expense, um, for the, for the year. Um, Charlotte and I have been working on trying to manage that and making sure that we're, um, staying within the budget and trying to keep that budget right, right on the number. Um, and it really is, sometimes it's whether we buy 10 months or do we buy 11 months in a given year. Um, but we, we buy, uh, tank or load of fuel just about every month. There's nowhere around it, so.
I did just have one quick question though. If, if you had, um, gone back and bought, um, our fuel on the spot market or as needed, do you know what we would have paid for that over the year?
I, I don't know that.
Okay.
Excuse me, I, I'd not, I'd not gone through that exercise.
I know, from a budgeting standpoint, um...
Yeah. I, I've not done that.
Okay.
Uh, here's our, here's our total expenses. Um, this is, this comes right off our claim, so you can see that it's, we've been pretty steady for the last three or four years. It's, it's down a little bit this year, uh, this past year. Um, that's, that's the, the bottom line that goes on the claim for the transportation department. So, um, that's, that's what we're asking the state to reimburse us, but we don't know how, how that goes, so.
Those spikes back in '12, '13, '14, those were fuels that they required, basically.
Say that again.
The, the higher ones there, those were basically higher fuel costs back then.
I, I think, um, that also included some benefits. Go, go way back, I think, when, when drivers, um, we had, we had some benefit costs in there that we don't have today.
Do you want to add anything?
Yes. So it was, it was really a, a double, a double hit on those things. Um, total miles, again, we, we, since the claim is driven based on total miles and percentages of total miles, we, we work really hard at trying to manage this, to try to keep that, um, consistent so we know where we're going to be. Um, and then there's a lot of pieces of that and historically I've given you every component of that in here as, as charts and graphs, and I didn't do that. It was starting to get long. So I just gave you the total and I'd be more than happy to get you any specific information you want, but this is the, this is the grand total, the miles we travel annually. Um, this is the, this is the non-reimbursable miles, I think, um, I think, particularly you asked about it last year, and, um, this is what each of the functions, um, that we do that is considered a non-reimbursable trip. Um, I did combine, I think, last year, I think I may have had boys and girls separately and then running off the end of the page. So I combined where, where appropriate for boys and girls together. Um, but this is just the cost of what each activity costs us on a, on a mileage basis. Um, and then the next one is the middle school, same, same information, uh, but it's just , um, specific for the middle school. Um, I wanted to just try to highlight a few things that we didn't get accomplished this year. Um, over the summer, um, we dismantled every route that we had been doing and, and redid them all this year. Um, we did the pre-K routes. That's also one of, one of the challenges, is we get those so late in the, um, in the year before pre-K starts, it's, it's difficult to do that. Plus, pre-K went from around 100 students to, I think, 150 this year. So there was like a, a 50% increase in the number of students and they're all, when we are building these routes, they're all individual pickups or, or individual drop-offs. So it's student by student by student, morning and afternoon. So we're, we're trying to come up with some ways to help, um, manage that, um, systemically and figure out ways that we can do it smarter. Uh, we know we're not going to have a lot more time, so we're trying to find ways to do it, um, smarter.
So this may be a dumb question, but are the, pre-K is not mandating, am I getting that, that do we have to pick them up? Or do you know?
No. We do not have to. We, we don't get, we don't get, when we pick them up on a, on an exclusive bus ride, um, we do not get reimbursed for that. Um, if we transport them with, say, all of the students that fall, which we do twice. If the morning kids ride with regular students, um, that's a reimbursable bus ride. Um, when we take the afternoon kids home, that's a reimbursable bus ride. But the two in the middle of the day where we take the morning home or pick up the afternoon is not, uh, is not a reimbursable trip. Um, we did, um, we did develop this year, uh, something else to help our drivers. Um, we're able to create route lists for them that have, has a picture ID for every student, uh, as long as they have a picture in Skyward. Uh, we utilize the download from Skyward ever since we've had Route Finder. Um, so we started using the picture IDs in Skyward to be able to provide our drivers with not only the student name and address and so on on their route sheet, but we also are able to provide them a picture ID. So especially in the early parts of the year, it's, it's very helpful to them, so. Um, developing all of our subdivisions from the parcel, Salem County parcel map has been very helpful as well. And then all the drivers went through, uh, for the first time ever, we went through and drivers were to select new routes across the board because of how we had redeveloped them, so. A lot of firsts this year.
And that was well received?
Um, 50/50?
Yeah.
I think there were, I think there were a lot that liked the idea of being able to pick something new. Um, and I think there were others who just liked what I had and didn't want to do something different, so, um, but because we changed all the routes contractually we were required to, we had to, we had to go through a senior-based selection process. So everybody had to go through, we couldn't just offer it to some and not others, so we had to do it entirely. But it, at the end of the day, I think they all understood the process, um, had some input on how we did the process and then essentially, um, they're happier now. Um, some of the challenges, no, uh, no hiding the fact that hiring, hiring, hiring drivers and monitors has been a challenge. Um, through December, we had 35 applicants for bus drivers. Um, 25 of those got to the next step and took the test, the background, physical, those kind of things. Um, there's, there's quite a bit of activity, once they do that, uh, they have to take some tests, they have to drive, pass the test and drive and do those things. Uh, we've only been able to hire, um, two regular drivers and two substitutes from that, from that section. And I, I really want to thank, uh, the HR group here too. They have, they have gone so far above and beyond helping us try to recruit, um, I feel like it ought to be in the MCA sometimes, is we recruit everywhere, everybody, all the time. Um, so, um, I do want to thank them a lot for helping us out.
How many more drivers do you need?
Well, as of Monday, we should have had everything filled.
Great.
Except, um, we get a phone call that says, uh, one of our drivers was being taken to the emergency room and she got admitted and so she's been in the hospital all week. So, um, so we really need, um, one more Quokon driver. Um, and we've got, um, three people that will be taking, um, a class, I think it's next week or the week after, but they're signed up to, um, take the initial class. So, um, the completion rate's not real high, but we keep pushing them through, they're trying to, um, trying to find that, that one extra driver, so.
Yeah. This may be a dumb question. Um, I come from a small town and a lot of these small towns, I know that my farmer friend's wives drive buses and they'll tell you, you know, you're not paying me, I'm here for the benefits. So I hesitate to bring it up, like, because that's something we need to talk about. Because some of these farmers are paying 25, 30,000 a year in healthcare. So they literally pay a dollar and they drive a bus, so. I'm just throwing that out there, I guess I'm open to that. So, so these drivers.
I, I mean, um, I, I have had people who have applied, questioned us about that, um, and specifically said, "I wouldn't care what you paid here if I got benefits." And it's essentially what you're saying. Um, so, yes, I, I, I have heard that. Um, so I, I think it's certainly, uh, something, um, that as a board, be something that we should at least talk about. Yes, sir.
Has there been an analysis done between what those costs might be in terms of salary versus benefits?
Um, I have not done that, but, um, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if it has been or not. I, I can't answer that question. Yeah, I can't answer that question. Um, I'm talking about pre-K, um, growth, um, and then the development around. We, we have been trying to work in Josh, in terms of those, trying to develop another, another, um, school code or another grade code or something where we can separate morning and afternoon, uh, which would help us with route development. And I, I think just a matter of get Josh and Transfinder and us in the same room at the same time to get that done, I, I know it's, it's something that we can do, which is probably want to make a look. So, um, I think before we get to pre-K next year, we'll have, we'll have a solution that will be, um, beneficial.
Do you, do you have, do you have an adequate number of buses and vehicles that can take the issue?
Oh, yeah. We've got enough buses, um, bodies to sit in them, but yeah.
It's just getting the...
Yeah, I mean, um, we, we do have, um, I mean, we have a few every day that, you know, don't start or have problems, so, and we've got, we've got some backup buses to do that, you know, and to manage that and, um, take field trips and, you know, take teams before school gets out. So we, we've got, we've got the equipment to, to do what we need to do, yes.
The lease buses, is there a warranty on those, like for the repairs?
They, basically, it's, it's still under factory warranty. We got, we got two-year old buses that have a five-year factory warranty. Essentially, really the only thing it doesn't cover is like light bulbs and tires.
Right.
I mean, but pretty much everything else is covered. Um, and we have, we've, we've had a couple minor issues, but almost we've had...
Well, I was really happy when we tried it with the eight buses. Part of me wonders if we should consider more. I know that's something everybody's not been interested in, but it's interesting to spend a hundred, maybe a few hundred thousand dollars a year in repairs. Yet, buses on rotation within a three-year lease, or none of them cost anything for maintenance, um, it might be interesting to see how that would translate into a shifting funding towards the other part of the busing that's been built, which is...
I mean, there, there are fleets that lease, you know, that lease their entire fleet.
And I know you guys are telling me pros and cons of that.
Yeah, there's, there are definitely pros and cons to, to both sides of that. I mean, uh, it's, it's where do you want to be? Um, if you get into a full fleet leases, you pretty much can't ever go back to owning your own bus. I mean, I don't, I'm not saying that that's a pro or a con, it's just that's, that's the difference.
They're more expensive, but yeah, no worries. It's a network.
I mean, there are options to do one-year leases or three or five. So you, you can get brand new buses, at least for five years. I mean, there's, there's some variables that...
I mean, we already had a larger percentage than we do now in the lease businesses.
You are ahead of your time.
Well, I can't, I can't remember where we got into the fact that it wasn't expensive about the whole discussion.
Um, going on to the next one here, but this, um, just some potential growth areas, these, you guys have seen these for a number of years. We sort of keep track of where our subdivisions are growing. Um, some slow down, some speed up, some don't start. I mean, it's, but it's, we just put them on the radar, um, just, just so that we know that there's a lot of potential out there. We haven't seen as much growth as, um, maybe we had seen a few years ago. Um, and some of the growth, their homes, they're not necessarily, they don't always relate to kids. Uh, so it's, it's one of those things that, um, like, we just, we sort of keep our finger on the, the pulse of the new homes. Um, I'm going to ask for permission for quite a few things, so I'll give you backup here when we get to that point, but these are, these are the items that we're going to, we're going to talk about. Um, mechanical supply bids, we do that annually. Um, the bus driver physicals, we do that annually as well. Um, we always do an RFP for, um, a local facility to do our physicals. A new one this year is, uh, we're going to do, we like to do an RFP, um, for our uniform services and our maps and our rugs and stuff. We, we've used Aramark for a number of years, um, and, um, we'd like to go out and put that service out for bid and see if we can help manage that cost. Uh, I've worked with Charlotte a lot on that particular, um, topic, so we're going to try to see if we can manage that cost a little differently. Um, uh, school buses, um, we've got some buses that we saw, 2000, we still have 2,003 buses, um, and, um, and actually there's plenty currently in this year's budget for that already, so, um, we just need to, um, jump through the hoops to get permission to seek the bids and, and bring that back to the board and then the fuel bids, which we talked about. Any other questions?
All good?
Thank you.
Any more questions? Jim, thanks.
Any more questions? Jim, thanks. Moving on. Report to Citizens, opportunity to address the school board on agenda. Anything they want to bring to the board? Anything on the agenda tonight?
No.
All good. Moving on then to consent and items five-one, five-six. Am I supposed to pull any of that? No, I need a motion to approve five-one, five-six is presented.
Certainly.
Second.
Second.
Ashley.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Gravich?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Personnel consent items six-one to six-seventeen.
I'd like to pull six-sixteen.
Six-sixteen. Update of organizational chart. Anybody else want to pull any? No, I need a motion to approve six-one to six-fifteen and six-seventeen is presented. Second. Second. Ashley.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Worley?
Yes.
Gravich?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Updated organizational chart.
I'm not sure who, who I direct this to, but what are the changes that have occurred on this organizational chart versus the last one that we approved?
I'm coming up, but I'm kind of stuck in this, so maybe I'm not. At the last, when you guys last approved the organizational chart, on there you, we moved the playground supervisors and cafeteria supervisors as reporting to the director of food service.
Okay.
However, because that's how it's always been structured.
Right.
But after for the conversation with the administrators, the playground supervisors actually work with the assistant principals. So, we just submitted this to you again because it made more sense, since they're the ones who are talking to them each day and dealing with issues on the playground, to have them align to the assistant principals.
So, there's that change here. Are there any other changes?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I don't think there are more.
Thank you. Okay. I make the most of it. Six-sixteen. Updated organizational chart.
Ashley.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Gravich?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Moving on, new business. Seven-one, Jim. We got permission to seek bids for purchase of two school buses.
Do we have to do these separate, or can we do seven-one through seven-five?
Are you going to present on each one?
No.
We're just doing seven. Two buses I got, and where are they going to work, or?
They'll work for starters.
Okay.
Thank you, by the way.
Anybody got any questions on the RFP for the purchase of two school buses?
My only question is, are we letting a couple go then?
Yeah.
We are.
Yeah, we've got one that's inoperable. It's got, it's got an engine failure.
Okay.
And we've got another one of the two thousand and threes that will be sent, sent with them. So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be two for two, Jim. That's, that's the plan.
So, you'll ask later for permission to sell them, or is that?
We trade them. We don't sell them outright. We trade them. So, it's, it's part of the purchase process. And you'll, you'll see those trade numbers. You'll see those in the, in the sheet when, when it comes back to the board with the numbers. You'll, you'll see all of that.
If I remember right, this was kind of in your plan back when we started thinking about taking these buses. And then you had a plan about.
Yes, sir. That is correct. That is absolutely correct.
Do you have any idea where these prices are this year? Are they the same, down, higher?
They're pretty close to the same. They're around eighty-five-ish. They're, they're pretty close to the same. We, we might not, probably won't see as much on the trade since we've got one that's inoperable and the other one's now fifteen years old and so.
And this is for an RFP for two buses. Any other questions? Ashley, please.
Gravich?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes. Fuel?
Seven-two, you're going to seek bids to go out for fuel contracting?
Certainly. Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Have a vote.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Gravich?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Seeking request for mechanical supplies. Anything you'd like to add?
This is a, this is an annual contract review for commonly-used supplies there in the shop for the making of these guys, the mechanics.
Send the, the second. Further discussion? Ashley, please.
Gravich?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And then the RFP for the org services.
This, this is a new, a new item. We've been, we've been dealing, Charlotte and I and Mike have been working on this for, for quite a while. And their contract, the current contract expires in June, beginning of June. And it's, it's something we felt like we needed to go out and look at some additional vendors. Again, all in the effort of managing costs, we, we've been able to manage that with our current vendor, Aramart, for a number of years. But it's something we felt like we needed to do this, this go on. So, Charlotte asked if I would, this is part of my presentation.
So, if memory serves, under an RFP, that's a request for proposal. Your brain will define back and tell us which one you think we should bring.
Yes, sir.
How many potential are out there?
I know, I mean, I know three that are out there and service this area. We, I've, I've been working on writing the RFP in preparation. And much like I did with my mechanical supplies, there aren't a lot of vendors who can service a district our size. So, the way we try to write the language so that if we chose to, we may offer mops to one company. We may offer uniforms to one company. We may offer kitchen services to another company. So, we try to, we try to give ourselves some room to be flexible. Or we could offer it all to one if there was one that drove the price down. But that way, they could be real sharp with their pencils on mops. But then we'd have, you know, maybe higher prices on uniforms with them. So, we, we try to set it up to be able, to be flexible.
Second.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ashley, please.
Burr?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Gravich?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes. Yes.
Again, RFP for bus drivers.
Can we do that annually?
Send a motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Ashley, please.
I'm trying to do them all together.
Can you ring it?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Seren?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes. Jim, thank you. We also, seven-six, we got some policies from press, first reading, information only.
There's one policy there. I can't remember the number, but I think there's one policy that we just have to double-check that the old board can approve agendas from old issues. Then the new board is installed. That's the only question I had by looking at one of these, one of the board policies. And I'll let you know which one that is. Dr. Wood, you can just ask any time. I'm not sure we can do what we used to do. The question is, okay, what number it is.
It was around in what now?
Well, the way, when, in the year of a change of a slate, what we usually do is the first portion of the meeting, the old board approves and votes on issues. Then the new slate is installed and then the agenda continues on. I'm not sure we can do the first part anymore. We just need to double-check.
Okay. Information only. Next, we got communications, eight-one, future board meeting date. We got a regular one on the twenty-eighth of February. Special one on March seventh, HR. March twenty-first, March and April twenty-fifth, regular.
There's one in February, on February twenty-third, which is the Legislative Alliance. Is anybody going to that? Usually, one board member goes. Did you do that last year?
Yeah.
Okay. So, are you, so that's the one thing. Remember that? You want to do the.
You want to go?
Yeah, I'll go.
You do?
Is it on a Tuesday? I'll look it up. Yeah, I'll go.
It does say to bring board members. So, I will go.
I will. I'm a private.
Any other dates anybody needs to bring around? Okay, then eight-two. This is an opportunity for citizens to bring anything for the school board. Anything they want to bring to it? If so, the voting, please, next name. We've got five minutes. Have you got any names?
I have to speak, come back here so I don't have to step over everybody?
Yeah, can I have your name, please?
Denise Pogio. I'm a parent. I'm in the school district. I am a middle-schooler and a high-schooler and a student that graduated in 2017. I am very disheartened by the board not reaching an agreement with the teachers on the collective bargaining. It is unsettling to know that our teachers are in oversized classrooms. They are having to not have substitutes, so are splitting of classrooms and taking on more children. I also speak as a former middle-school teacher. I taught for fifteen years in a middle-school in the northern suburbs. I know the struggles that teachers have. And even now, so, because I have represented teachers in school districts, not only here in central Illinois, but in the northern region, how difficult it is with all the state mandates upon teachers and with their licensure rules, how difficult it is for them, each and every day, increasing. And then to have in the back of your head, not knowing what's going to happen with the contract, what your salary is going to be, what your benefits are, what class sizes are going to be. And you have all of those struggles with more mandates on you by the state and the school district. And you can't concentrate. You lose your focus. Now, on the school board, or, I'm sorry, the ISB website on the school report card, the teachers here in the school district earn less than the average teacher's salary in the state of Illinois. We're not an average school district. These aren't average educators. And I don't think it is fair to have a goal of being less than average. I moved here to this community because of the school district, because of the schools and the quality education that these teachers provide. And they should be fairly compensated for it. We are in January, halfway through the school year, and they need to focus on educating the students and not worrying about this. So, please, put your best foot forward and negotiate with them, and let's get this contract settled.
Anybody else? Anything they want to bring to the board?
I'm sorry. Does the department have a comment on new topics, not on the agenda, right? Okay. Just trying to.
She's sitting on the floor.
Sorry. I have kind of a better. No, no, no. No, no, you are just fine. Do not even worry about yourself. I am just trying to open some comments. Sorry. I, may I just ask a question? I'm sorry. Totally unrelated. The logo situation is now closed. And were there submissions that were received?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Did I miss that in a news broadcast? I'm sorry.
Do you want me to, do you want me to add that?
Yeah, we got to make all the logos.
We had a hundred and eighty-six submissions.
Great.
So, we met as a committee and are in the process of reviewing those submissions.
That's awesome. I'm so glad to hear. Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. My name is Karen Wykold, and I am here to speak about marching band. Participation in marching band at the high school level is a requirement in the academic class of band at Glenwood High School. This makes the Chatham District very different from many other neighboring districts, including District 186. The band boosters and the teachers, I'm sorry, and the teacher are utilizing the program to circumvent district approvals for expenditures by assessing fees on students that are enrolled in an academic class to cover the costs that the teacher says are unfunded by the district. Marching is a huge time burden on students that affects students academically. One full forty-hour week before school begins in August is mandatory, altering family vacation time. Additionally, there is a mandatory practice every morning from seven a.m. to eight a.m. through the entire first quarter of school, requiring rides for every child to school as buses cannot help these families. Families whose parents work must accommodate the requirement or remove the children from band due to these mandatory practices. Mr. Suzinski added early office hours at the high school, an effort as a parent that I hugely applaud. I think it's wonderful to have teachers available to students in the morning. However, no band students are allowed to participate in that. Oh, sorry. So, that sets these students behind their peers in time to get teacher help. Students who must take the bus can't participate in band. Families in our district depend on the bus, and the mandatory early practices do not allow families who cannot drive their children. Families must get to the, the students to the school and on the field by seven a.m. to participate in the class of band. Students who need, who need to meet with a teacher must take, and must take the bus home from school, cannot meet with their teachers after school either. This puts students without access to transportation in an untenable situation, quit band or fall behind academically. Students who participate in varsity sports, especially those who leave campus for practice, such as cross-country, cannot meet with their teachers after school, or they risk losing their team or before school without penalty in the academic class of band because of this mandatory practice. Every practice must be made up. There is no excuse to see a teacher during office hours as a valid excuse. And no more than three can be missed over the entire first six weeks of school without impacting students academically. Multiple students that left class, have left band as a class due to the requirement to march and the effect that it has on academics, a lack of sleep, sports and other school activities. When students approach the band teacher looking for flexibility to deal with classes, sports and transportation problems, the students and families are told point-blank to take their children out of band to meet the requirements of the class. This is not consistent with the district's drive towards steam. Music and the arts are important in education in the district. Other schools, such as District 186, offer marching as a zero-hour class and a volunteer marching band to accom, to accommodate the students in this predicament of wanting to play an instrument and participate in other activities and excel academically. I urge the school board to look into how many students have left band since arriving at the high school due to the marching requirement. Thank you.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything they want to bring to the board on any item? Okay. Everybody, I want to thank the sheer attendance. Appreciate you having me here. Any motion to adjourn? Thank you.
Second?